So I think what scares us the most is the point that there's a limit in our opportunity to use, you know, all of our competitive advantages, whether it's our company name, the color of our trucks, our price, all those different things. And we do get comments on all of that stuff. Now, as it relates to the RFP, I think for sure there are two current haulers who didn't respond. So they've given up. The other ones just want to save their business and they can't, they've got enough market share, I assume, that they can't say, "Well, I can't not respond." I mean, the government has said, "Hey, respond because if you don't, you're going to lose your business." So they're forced to respond. I can't blame them for that.
Pushed it, but there we go. But I did want to share one thing. I had met with a couple haulers and, I mean, at least it's my understanding that of the license haulers in Maplewood, your organization represents two, I think? Maybe three?
Three, at least.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, and so the ones I met with weren't part of your organization.
Okay.
But when I was talking to them about the effort that we had made to make sure that a couple haulers, presumably smaller haulers, could get together and bid on a zone, they wouldn't have the wherewithal to do it on their own, but combined they would and not have to necessarily go out and buy a bunch of new trucks and all that type of stuff. They basically told me that there's no way they'd work with each other. I mean, they seemed like very friendly people. They liked each other as far as persons go, but that, you know, the impression I left with was that they felt that the hauling industry was just too competitive and that there's no way that you would work with your competitors. When I just contrast that to my industry where bi-weekly we get together with lots of other companies that are in the organization, our trade organization, and we talk about how we do our business and share ideas and, you know, the whole idea is to make the whole industry better and raise the level of, or the expectations that people can rely on when they come to somebody in our industry. And so it just seemed very foreign to me that they were basically saying, "Hey, there's no way that we're going to work with anybody. We're trying to raise our market share and basically, you know, if you're raising your market share, they're losing theirs." And so anyway, I just found it very interesting. Okay. So let's make it really brief. We've kind of been here a long time. John?
Okay. It's a quick thought. I suspect, I certainly have heard from many people in elected officials and staff levels in other cities around the metro, and I know that although Maplewood may be in the vanguard in what we're doing here right now, sort of, I know that there are numerous other cities that are in various stages of talking about what to do about issues in solid waste. And some of it has to do with a whole range of stuff ranging from, you know, environmental regulations and laws and priorities, all the way down to cost issues and, you know, road lifespan and all kinds of stuff. So whatever happens in Maplewood, I suspect that there, I know you'll be going to more meetings in your future. And one of the things that, from what Will was talking about, that I think, and I realize that your trade association has a policy position on this and that you have a job as a representative of your association to be passionately advocating for what you believe in and what the trade association is endorsing. But Will's comments brought to mind the thought that it would be, it would be interesting if other cities go down some path similar to what we've been exploring, to have a way as an association to provide more help to the small haulers in how to respond to RFPs and in cities where there is organized collection today. I, you know, we worked very hard in the trash working group to try to create as level of playing field as possible to create different ways that haulers could either be bidding for part of the city or be going as teams. And I think that for the most part, some of the proposals may, I mean, you have single names on those lists of proposals. I think that says something. And I think it could be good for your trade association, you know, this is an area of public policy that's going to be changing in the coming decades, so I just wanted to give you some food for thought on that, about what might be helpful to your members, if not this year, you know, five or 10 years down the road, and if not in cities that are considering organizing, then certainly responding to RFPs in cities that are already organized and review their arrangements periodically and might be persuaded to allow more small haulers in in those kinds of terms.
Okay, thank you.
I suppose that was brief for John.
And I'm not going to say anything.
No, well, yeah, but I can. So now Kathy?
Since you're involved with the trade organization, are you aware of, have you seen, or do you know anything about, I think it was between two and three weeks ago, in our local paper, there was a story about a survey that was taken. And it was a rather entertaining story. And there were lots of, shall we say, questionable ways of interpreting and giving statistics. And is that something you are aware of?
You know, I don't think we want to go here.
Yeah, I do want to go here because...
I'm sorry, we don't. He was in the, in the paper.
I didn't, I didn't even know, I don't, I don't remember that about it.
I can give you a short response if you like.
Yes, just give me a short response, that's all I'm asking.
I was, I was the one quoted in the paper.
Okay, sorry, didn't make the connection.
It's okay. And I think that, to be quite candid, and I told him this, I don't think the reporter did a very good job. I think people should look at the survey and the survey questions and make a decision for themselves on whether they think it's valid or not.
Okay.
That's all.
Thank you. I didn't recognize your name, sorry.
No problem.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, so I think that it would be fair to say that the recommendation which you had in your report, Sean, seems to me from what I've heard, the council kind of agrees with that. And then also really the recommendations that Mr. Nefeu had in his report, my impression would be that probably most everybody agrees with those also. And the need to, if we're going to go that route, we need to try to, one, provide better service and provide for certainly the penalty part, you know. It doesn't do us any good to only be able to remove someone's license. And so, anyway, I think that's what you're looking to get out of this. Certainly, there's been a lot of comment. I'm sure you're making notes.
Yes, thank you very much on behalf of the Trash Hauling Working Group. So we'll bring back the first track to the council on September 26 with your initial review of the proposals. And then both tracks will come to you in November sometime for the deciding factor as to possible improvements or contractual system.
Okay. Marv, did you have something?
Yeah, one of the things that was talked about in 1997 was if you could get 75% of your people to sign up for one hauler for your block, you could organize by neighborhood. It never got implemented, but that was talked about. And to me, I thought it made sense because this way, the public themselves are buying into it because that's something they decided they wanted.
Okay, that's, that's good information. I would just add to that that in this go-around, after kind of our initial meetings and we had sort of the flood of emails, I had sent out some ideas to those people who had sent me emails and suggested that that might be an option. And actually, the response was very negative, that now we're foisting off the thing on them. And so they don't want us to do it, but they don't want to do it either. So anyway, let's move on to the next topic.
Yay.
So this is only just about three or four pages. I can't imagine it's going to take too long.
Mayor and council, we can get through it real quick.
Nice.
And so if we can go to the overhead, we are going to move through this. We have 18 slides, but I am going to move through the slides quickly because none of the staff at this point in time really has an understanding from the council what are the hot items. And so I'm going to move through quickly and expect the council is going to stop and ask for discussion on items. Otherwise, we're going to move right on through. So as we, we move through, the clear item tonight, council, is for you to work towards establishing the maximum levy. And very quickly, the process we followed, you've seen a lot of these slides before, really started talking budget at the retreat when you set the goals for us. We started bouncing ideas off you in March, talked about what happened in 2010, some referendum discussion items in April, that both the CIP and the CAFER were approved May 23. And in June, then you as a council began deliberations on the 2012 budget. In July, we talked about a process. This is the conclusion of that process. And in August, each of the departments brought presentations to you as part of the agenda. Obviously, September 12 is the state statute where you must set that. Council, this is the goal. It's the wording you agreed to clearly. This is the budget and what we're doing. There is a lot of, if you want to go algebra involved in this. The infamous page 10 that we talked about at one point in time, actually is page 33 of 33. So if your algebra is really good, that's the last page of your packet. But really, tonight is your idea to try to fill that in or help us fill it in. Gail gets to be the scorekeeper tonight. She's got her computer. She's going to keep score if you make any changes. Otherwise, we'll summarize that. But clearly, financial sustainability was the goal you established, the charge you gave us as staff, and we believe we are comfortable with these recommendations as a management, financial team bringing them to you. So you also established a goal and clearly one that, that we need continued discussions on, but we are making, we believe, major progress on, and that is evaluate and clear word beginning to implement the facility improvements into that infrastructure needs. And we are, again, comfortable with where we are and where we're going. You did talk about, at that point in time, about a levy increase. Some of you were three, others said five. Just so you know what that number is, a range of 525 to 875. And clearly, in order to make that work, you said operating costs need to be reduced and shifted to support funding for capital projects. And again, a theme, two themes, financial sustainability and shifting of those costs to support capital. Those are the two things this budget does. And so with that, somehow we're not moving, oh, there we're going. Very quickly, here is how the 2011 levy worked. You will note certainly the general fund being the major item, rec programs receive a subsidy, and the community center received a subsidy. But debt service was nearly $4 million. Then ambulance received $0. Chief Lukin talked about that. Capital improvements projects, we had a balance and we spent it down. So even though we did projects there, and we also didn't put any money away for fire trucks, and we did nothing for park development. Your total levy last year was $17,503,454. Council, if you do very quick math, okay, 1% of that is $175,000. So when we talk about a 1% increase, it's in those increments that we do that. And very quickly, council, you will, the, the goal tonight is to get to the last page of this worksheet and have this form filled out for 2012. I do want to spend just one brief minute, maybe Gail will help me here if I misspeak, but this is an evolving issue, and that is the 2012 market value homestead item. The credit program at the state was eliminated. We're starting to get the impacts, what this is, but clearly, it's important for you as a council to understand how that's going to impact us. Maplewood, what we're finding is in a small group of cities in Minnesota who actually see a benefit or may see a benefit from this. You can talk, call it a benefit, you can have to understand though what we mean as a city by thinking that this is a benefit. It may not be. But in the 2011 budget, Maplewood assumed the market value homestead credit was part of our tax collection rate. And as an example, in 2011, our tax collection rate, we assumed 92.5%. So for every $100, we assumed we would have usable money of $92.50, okay? In that, market value homestead credit was 3.5%, okay? Now that program's being eliminated. So in effect, we are going to assume that for every $100 we levy, we're going to get $96 of usable money. So by assuming that, we literally have covered that. And what that means is that we, with this change, we result in $525,000 of quote, "new levy" money to Maplewood, okay? One more slide on this. Understand what that impact means to our property owners. Number one, it's a tax shift, okay? We're shifting taxes from one area to another. This is happening on a, not just Maplewood, not just Ramsey County, but obviously statewide. And the impacts are going to vary greatly depending upon, you know, whether a bedroom community or like us with a large industrial, commercial base, it's going to vary dramatically. And so if statewide, every jurisdiction, and remember, this is not just cities, it's cities, counties, school districts as well, and we are less than a third of the tax in our city. But if everybody had a 0% levy increase statewide, the impact would be a $250 million increase in property taxes to all non-homestead properties, okay? So if nobody raised their levy, new money, 250 million of an increase. In Ramsey County, that, that transfers into $23.5 million. And in Maplewood alone, that change means a $2.1 million increase in people's taxes. The largest impact in Maplewood is likely to be on apartment owners, although we don't know that. And the reason being is that while all other categories, your homes, your businesses had a decrease, not, not great, but a slight decrease in their valuations, property owner in values appear to have gone up, is it about 3% Gail? Somewhere in that category?
Apartments.
Yeah, apartments have gone up 3% while everybody else has gone down. So apartment owner properties are going to see a large impact. Again, with a 0%, no change in the levy, that's going to happen. Commercial and industrial properties are going to see probably in the area of a 3.5% increase just from this shift. Residential properties under 76,000 will see no impact. They will get a credit. But the credit gets phased out, so anybody with property valued over 413,000 may see a tax increase of a couple of hundred dollars because market value homestead program has been eliminated, okay? So we call it new money, we call it new levy, but understand that the impacts for somebody with a $76,000 home, yeah, it's, it's not going to cost them a dime. But there's a lot of other property owners that have that impact. So as long as we understand going in that, how that's impacting and how we're looking at it, this is a major assumption of our budget.
So that then would be a hot button for me, just to point out to the council really that I do recall that back at the retreat, we kind of set the 3% to 5% type of level increase for the budget. And then it seems to me, at least I recall a meeting where three council members said that they'd be more comfortable in a maximum of three. One council member said that she wanted to know what those impacts would be before she would make that kind of statement. And then I don't recall what the other one did. And, and then all of a sudden, we kind of got this information. And so then at the next meeting, just because of the impacts that we anticipated that we'd have, suddenly we were down at like a 2.45, 2.47, somewhere in there. And, and at first, because we didn't really know exactly what that would mean to the community, it seemed like a great deal, you know? All of a sudden, we're down in, below the maximum that at least I heard a majority of the council members support. But to tell you the truth, we really didn't do anything. I mean, if that shift hadn't been made, we'd still be at 5%. I mean, the only reduction that we've had is because the state did something. And what they did was stupid because we had a legislature that went in and said, you know, "We're not going to raise taxes on anybody." And that result is they once again forced property taxes to be raised. And so, so I'm concerned because I think that I have, can have some expertise in the area of how bad business is for our small businesses. And they do not need the extra burden. And so for us, just, you know, Chuck's saying it's a benefit. Well, it is a benefit to the city if you consider the people in this room and, and the people in this building, the city. But it's not a benefit to the city if you think about the people who are going to get hit. And, and so I'm concerned about that. And so when we're talking about, you know, the reductions that I hope that we would be able to make, I don't see that we've made them yet. And so, John, you have a comment?
Yeah, I'm going to, I want to follow up on that with, in, in some way, I'm going to agree and in some way, I'm going to disagree. Where I'm going to disagree is that, that I, I believe that unlike most, probably most cities in the state, this is a very good thing for Maplewood. And the reason is that I think it gives us a significantly greater budget clarity and predictability that has been a very problematic for us in the last few years. I mean, when we had, we had the Poliniun allotment right before the end of the year, one year where half our MVHC didn't come in, and then we had it completely eliminated. And in those cases, we were having to adjust our budgets on the fly, sometimes, you know, three days before the end of the fiscal year, to adapt to tax revenues that were not coming in, on top of other tax revenues that already sometimes don't come in when people challenge their valuations and so forth. So I think that it's important for us, first of all, to recognize that this means the state can't take this away from us in the future and that it will mean that there will be a better correlation between a levy number that we set in September and in December and what money we actually are expecting to get in. And that will be good going forward. This year, it screws up all the math. It, it messes it up. It's way worse in other cities. It's not as bad for us because we had lost so much that market value homestead credit was a lot smaller than what other cities are losing in effect through the, the tax increase by the legislature that the, that this change is, and also the loss of LGA. But it means that, that the numbers on last year's levy and the numbers on this year's levy are not apples-to-apples comparison, even more than usual. And there's, there's always plenty of, of non-comparison-ness, depending on who successfully challenged their commercial valuations and what's happening in different property classes and all kinds of stuff. And it's, I mean, taxes are a huge burden on small businesses. I've been looking at, at properties, you know, in a number of contexts recently, and taxes can really be insanely high, especially when you have a building that somebody can't unload because they're asking for a price, a third of what the tax assessor says it's worth and that they're being taxed on. These are big problems and we have limited ability to deal with them at our level because those are formulas and stuff beyond our control. But where I strongly agree with you, Will, is that when we are looking at this spreadsheet, this is, I think it's good to have it in these, terms of these numbers because there's going to be a number that we're going to be passing in a resolution as our maximum levy, and it's not going to be these comparative percentages. But I think that we all have to look at that number on the bottom line and essentially add 2% to it in order to have a comparison to what we were talking about at that retreat and what we were talking about before the special session and the legislature made this ability, for us to be a little bit closer to apples-to-apples in terms of thinking what the impact is going to be on a homeowner, on an apartment dweller, on a business. And so from that standpoint, we should absolutely not take as complacent that, "Woohoo, we're at 3%. That's what we wanted." Because no, the, the impact on, on the dollars people pay on, on their bill is going to be as though we were still at 5% or perhaps a little bit more because some of these things wound up creeping up, I think, maybe in, in some areas as things have been evaluated in the budget process.
Yes, well, and as I mentioned, we're at 2.47 or whatever it was for about a week. Then we got an email that said, "Well, we've made some adjustments. Now we're at 3.07." And so, by, by the way, which just kind of happened, as near as I could tell. It's not like any of the councils said, "Oh, we should adjust these things." It's just all of a sudden, there was adjustments, and now we're at this.
Mayor and council, again, responding to two of those points. Number one, the second point about the, the new items in here. Certainly, as part of the discussion, we heard some of those and we wanted to be sure they were on the table for you to decide through this spreadsheet, okay? So we didn't want to move them or lose them through the process, certainly providing those recommendations. The second point, market value homestead credit. Remember, there are some cities very close that we have borders with who, their cut was local government aid. It was not market value homestead credit. And so they received that over the years. What we are now doing is being able to finally realize the money that we were out there levying. I mean, we were not receiving our full levy. Where other cities were receiving their full levy, their reduction was in local government aid. And so their impacts are dramatically different than Maplewood's. And so I understand that. How you may want to consider, you know, page 33, your spreadsheet, you know, instead of taking a $525,000 reduction, which is in effect with the way the math works, yes, it's a 3.0% on there now, I mean, you may want to reduce the 525 to a smaller number. And so in giving the instructions, that's an item we certainly can come back to as we move through the list. Finally, the other item. How do new items get on the list? Again, part of the discussions. I mean, some of them are in Chief Tamala, Chief Lukin's discussions, and we're going to talk about those. So should I move on and we'll come back to that?
Well, Kathy had something, so.
Does fiscal disparities still play into all this?
Mayor and council, yes, it does. And fiscal disparities plays into it fairly large, as does tax increment financing. If you, if, you know, and we have some housing districts, we have to look at them. Most of our housing districts are pay-as-you-go. But when you start giving credits and reducing somebody's valuation through a credit program, which is what is going to replace market value homestead credit, that reduces the amount of tax increment financing we're collecting. So TIF districts. Now remember, some of our TIF districts were combined and used to help pay for some bonds. So we're still evaluating that. That's one of the, the problems that we have with this number is that we just had a webinar last Friday. Gail, I think, went last Tuesday to a, to a seminar trying to understand how this is going to be rolled out, what the impacts are. So at this point in time, we're being very conservative of staff, saying, "Okay, this is a maximum levy. We're going to have better information in October." But at this point in time, we're suggesting the, the way we've listed in the report, but fully understand the difficulty and wanted to be sure you understand the impacts.
And then I have a comment, sort of. It sounds oversimplified, but, and I have a simple mind, so that makes sense. But your comment about it's actually over five and you can't do that or don't want to do that or whatever percent that is. It seems to me that, playing on John's comment about how, what this means down the road, is that we either lose or we lose, depending on how we look at this. Because focusing on just that percentage for this year without looking at what the impact possibly positively, probably positively, for us down the road is just as bad as Governor TP using one-time monies as a, as a fix when it wasn't. It's just the reverse of it. So while I know that, you know, some people up here would like to wave the flag in front of Kathy and say, "She'll raise your taxes." of Kathy and say, she'll raise your taxes before she'll do anything else, not really. But on the other hand, this, we're put in this position by people way beyond our control. But if it's going to be to our advantage down the road, we have to look at how much we want to carve up and implode. This year, when next year is going to be more equalized to start out with. And yet, you, this is the most unfavorable part of this job, let's face it. But with what is presented to us, we still have to make this bus go to keep going down the road. And I don't really want to underinflate one of the four tires, if I still want the bus on the road next year. Again, oversimplified. But I don't have as hard a time with, I guess, a percentage as some of my colleagues. Depending on what that percentage means, that's why I said what I did way back at the beginning. If it means that in the future, we are better off, then we have to be careful what we do now. Doesn't make it any easier, or any better, or any more palatable, just how I look at it.
Charge ahead.
I will charge ahead, and thank you again. That number is so different, and we're still learning about it. We'll, we'll try to work forward on that as we move through. Next item, going through down the list, some of the items on the capital improvements plan. You heard about the recreation program fund from Mr. Kineko, being reduced by $25,000. Understand that does, his recommendation is that, in addition, in order to do that, he's gonna have a 5% increase in fees across the board. He also talked about expenditures being increased in that, but some of that is a shift of personnel. Not talking about adding new people, new faces. You won't see new people around here unless somebody leaves, but just a new way to allocate dollars to more accurately reflect, but starting out a reduction at $25,000 in that subsidy. We talked about increased funding for MCC of $120,000. And operating losses that we talked about, the MCC operated in 2009, $636,000 in the red, was improved in 2010 to $423,000. And we're projecting this year at 349, and next year at 226. Mr. Kineko's done an excellent job providing you the detail of that three-to-five-year plan, but it's, it's not, doesn't come without significant changes. Now, this does provide $225,000 of cap, for capital projects. However, you've already implemented 150 of that to the pool, project that's already there. So, in effect, you've spent some of that money. I'm gonna come back to this in a little bit, when we talk about the fire department, and so, that 2% levy in there. But just so you know, the operating loss in the ambulance fund, 2009, the CAFR showed an $861,000 negative loss. Now, that's certainly an issue that, that we need to address, and we talk about sustainability. That improved in 2010 to 684. And we're gonna, I'll come back to that particular item. That's a, really, one of the biggest items in this budget, and I want to spend a little more time on that in just a minute, so. We'll go through a couple other items in the capital improvements plan. The debt, debt service levy, Gail did an evaluation. I believe, you know, we're talking about reducing our streets program by 50 to 60%. And Mr. Thompson talked about how that's impacting his personnel very dramatically. That's for the next three years. If approved, the debt levy will be 23.3% of your levy. Your goals in the back of the packet, in the back of the budget, says the debt levy should be somewhere between 15 and 25%. So, we're starting to get up close to the point where we don't want to do that, but clearly, we are in good shape. Really, debt payments are at the point now where they don't reduce until 2015, 16, as things start retiring. And so, we're really at that point now, where, where we're very stable. But our bond rating remains very good, excellent. I mean, we are not, we're always trying to take that next step to have the top rating. We're certainly not going the other way. And so, our debt service fund is in very good shape, and certainly with this increase, we're comfortable with that. We talked about a levy for the police department expansion, started that discussion. Our space needs study certainly documented that adding people and not adding space over the last 20 years simply didn't work. You know, as we talked earlier about the collection system, you can add people, but why do we use a multiplier? Well, we need to provide space. You can't hire a person and say, by the way, we have no place for you to sit, or, you know, no office, we can't provide services, you know? And that's really, in effect, what police department came back to tell you, is that we need more space for the people that we hired, and things have changed. That 150,000 simply is, will be talked about to be added to probably a future CIP bond, should you choose to proceed with that major expansion, and go with that accordingly. We were talking about a levy. We used all the funds, all our existing, but for park equipment replacement. Counselor, you've talked about this for a couple of years, a number of you that said we simply need to get money for park equipment replacement. We spent $45,000 this year. We spent that out of reserve. We're now talking about spending $95,000 next year. It's nowhere near enough, but it's certainly a down payment.
Chuck, could we drop back to talking about the $150,000 for the police department expansion?
Yes.
And so, what is that money gonna get used for?
Mayor and Council, one of the items, when we originally put it in, we thought that we would be able to do some short-term movement of people and around, and maybe finish off some spaces, and move one small little group, and do a few Band-Aids. Based upon the space needs study, that, that's not gonna be effective. And so, what we're projecting to do with this money, in our last report, we talked about using this money to move to the next phase, and then eventually, we'll sell a bond for that, a CIP bond, should you choose to do so. And then this money would, this would be part of the levy dedicated to begin payment for that bond. And as we-
So, I need some clarification. So, we use this money to move to the next phase. What is the next phase? Is that then selling a bond?
No, the next phase will be design, working into the final determinations, and more importantly, a phasing plan. You know, are we, are we talking about construction in 2013, 2012, 2013? Or are we talking about, you know, maybe one or two of the pods, and just doing it at piecemeal, and moving through that? We haven't made that decision yet. We simply need to know what we're gonna do. We don't know what we're gonna build. We don't know whether we're gonna do $9 million worth of improvements, or 4, 100, $1.5 million worth of improvements over the next eight to 10 years. And so, that next phase is what we're talking about, and this will be used for money, A, to pay for that, but B, also to say, we see something happening in the next five years, and that's gonna cost money. Rather than make a decision to say, well, let's pay for operating expenses now, and we'll pay for that in the future, this is setting money aside for paying for those bonds in the future.
Doesn't it seem like a pittance? We're talking about millions of dollars we need to spend. I mean, how is $150,000 gonna help us?
Mayor and Council, the, when you talk about selling bonds for a six- or seven-million-dollar project, and you spread that out over 20 years, you know, this is 25% of the down pay, 25% of the levy payment. And what we're talking about is dedicating some money now, and so, it goes back to that debt service item that we talked about, that line item right there. Debt payments do not start decreasing until 2015. And so, what we're saying is, set money aside, so that in 2015, 16, when your debt starts going down, you can simply keep your debt at the same level, and make the payments for the new bonds that you're issuing. And that's really what we're gonna try to talk about on September 26th. But we're building in this item that, you know, you as a council said, our debt is high enough, we don't want it to go anymore. You said, start reducing it. And so, we've leveled it off, but what we're talking about, in order to do things in the future, is selling other debt, and then setting the debt up, so that your debt payments don't go down. That is definitely algebra, yes. And, and I want to be sure that you understand what we're doing with this. 150,000 is simply saying, we think it's, it's, you know, more than 50% likely that you are going to do something in the police department expansion realm, and that we need to start setting money aside, and not committing that to ongoing annual operating expenses. We are going to commit money to payment of some type of debt expense. Don't know what it's gonna be, what it is, and go there accordingly.
John?
It's like saving up for a down payment on a house. I mean, ultimately, it means having a lower mortgage, the more you save. And so, if, if the bond issue doesn't mean, any, any of this 150,000, and whatever in the future years, that gets spent, means money that won't have to be bonded for, and won't have interest occurring on it over that time as well. And so, it's actually magnified by whatever the interest rates will be whenever that actually happens. And if, for whatever reason, it takes us longer to get the whole thing going, if we don't start construction until 2018 or something, if we've set aside $150,000 a year for it, we'd have a much better chunk of money. And that, I can see the police chief grimacing at the idea of waiting until 2018. I can see you reflected in Kathy's glasses, I think that was. Anyway, I very much approve of and appreciate that approach of setting something gradually on it. And my only other comment is that I think there may be some other areas where we should be a little bit more gradual, but we'll get to them.
Kathy?
It's what wasn't done eight to 10 years ago on the community center, and look where it got us. That's the only thing that I can equate in my mind. If we don't start looking ahead, planning ahead, even if it, I mean, debt is a strange thing, I'm glad somebody else is handling it. But if you don't start setting aside, you end up in the trap we're in with the community center, in my estimation. Or you stop where you said you were gonna go, one of the two.
Mayor and Council, and if I might add, just on top of that, this really gets back to that sustainability discussion that we're talking about. Having been involved in the last three, four budgets, we simply did budgets from year to year, because money was so tight, and trying to keep dollars there, that we did not look into those future years. And in past years, what we may have done with this 150,000 is simply said, you know what, we can go ahead and hire two more people here, or another person there, or spend it for this operating expense. And once you have a one-time operating expense, those don't go away, and that'll come back next year as another operating expense. And so, what we're saying is simply setting this money aside, and it, it goes into a fund, and if you decide not to pay it, it becomes part of your reserves for next year. But we're setting it aside for use, and designating it for police department expansion.
So, I, I'll go ahead and say this, it, I'm sure it won't make me any particular friends, but it's, it's odd to me that this year, the police department can go without $150,000 in operating expenses, and the fire department can go with what, without whatever it is they're setting aside. Last year, they couldn't, apparently. And, but they can now, because now, we're putting money aside, taking their operating expenses, and putting it aside for them to improve their departments in the future. And, and I find that to be disappointing, that, you know, as we go further and further into the recession, and I become more and more familiar with the impacts that it's having on our businesses and our citizens, you know, I've become more and more a believer, not a tea partier, but more and more of a believer in restraint. And so, so, so now we have a situation where there's $150,000 from the police department example, that apparently they can get by without, to operate, as long as it's going into a fund which will better their departments in the future. And so, I don't like that. And so, it's just a statement.
Mayor, and certainly I appreciate the comment, and in response, I certainly think it's very appropriate that we respond with, how we put the budget together for your information and understanding is greatly expanded. And so, how I put the numbers and the information in the report, equating to the cuts in various departments, sometimes has an ease of understanding. But I also want you to understand that the cuts that every one of the department heads have brought forward, and had to put forward, are scrutinized by our team. Mr. Anton and myself, and Gail met with each department head for hours, and, and at times, days after each other, and tried to scrutinize through this, and looked for those various savings. And none of them come without, you know, some reservations as to whether it can be done. And so, we put the challenge to each of the department heads, and they came forward, you know, in my opinion, very, very broad-based, rather than department-based. And so, I appreciate how that looks, and part of that might be, simply be, the way I presented it to you, in order to put it in that understandable format, rather than say, gee, Chief Tamala, he would only cut $150,000 if we gave it to the police department for expansion. I can tell you that that certainly is not the case.
No.
Well, and I know that. I certainly know that, that the staff operates as a team. And just like I wouldn't turn to Mr. Kineko and say, look at all the great things that are happening, the parks department, all Dewey's things, because I know that it's a team effort, and those decisions aren't made by individual people, that they involve a lot of discussion. And so, you know, he gets some credit, he's the department head, just like the chief is the department head. And so, so I'm not blaming individuals, I'm just, you know, I look at things, and I see them, and I think, how is the public gonna perceive this? And you're right, it could be that just in the way it's presented, that it creates that perception. But, you know, it's, it's, that's certainly the perception that I see, when I look at the way that it's listed. And, and, you know, it just kinda goes back a little bit to, you know, wanting to make more reductions last year, that as a team, it was determined that we didn't want to make those reductions. And so, one of you two, whoever is supposed to speak, yes, go ahead, Gail.
I just had a comment. What you're looking at here are not cuts from the 2011 budget. These cuts are based on the guideline amounts that we gave the departments. If I look at the general fund budget for the police department, from 2011 to 2012, based on all the adjustments we have in here, they're actually increasing 1.8%. So these cuts are off of our guideline amounts that we gave to all the department heads, not cuts from 2011 budget to get here. So, might be a little confusing in that respect.
Yeah, I would say, for me, it certainly is. So, we can, wait, John?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I do have the perception that in some of these areas, we're gonna be reducing service. I mean, the, the police department, that's a decision to have a force, authorized strength, two officers, less than it used to be. That's gonna have an impact. The recreation program is talking in the report about, about, you know, recreation programs, they're gonna be cut, because they're not pulling their weight, and we're not gonna put the money into them, because we have to do it somewhere else. I heard a hint in the engineering and public works proposal, that we might be a little bit slower on some of the things. I mean, I didn't push on that, but I kinda had the sense that maybe we're not gonna have the streets plowed quite as fast as they were this past winter. And so, I think that there are a number of things like that, which we, as a council, certainly in my time here, have been very reluctant to embrace any of those- certainly in my time here, have been very reluctant to embrace any of those service cuts. And so I, I do have a perception in this process that a lot of what we're doing is acknowledging that we can't, we have to both have the revenue increases and the service cuts because we have to start taking care of these deferred things and, and we have to start planning for the things that will become even more pressing a couple of years from now. And that puts us in a really uncomfortable position and it, for, for me as a Maplewood taxpayer, taxpayer, it sucks because I have to in effect feel like I'm paying more to get less because there are more of these other things, whether it's the, the fire stations that, that need building or the ambulance fund that's not keeping up with the expense of providing that service. I mean, having said that, I, I think that you're spot on and, on the way that it can look as though, hey, we can just come up with this money. But another thing that I've noticed in, in past years as we've gotten the updates and as we've gotten to the end of the year is that I do suspect that a lot of these departments have found ways to constantly shave money as the year goes forward and have come up with this money at the end of the year, which for instance, allowed us to do some of the things at the community center and, and stuff like that. And it may be that some of what's going on in here is staff deciding to book those savings ahead of time. And I do have a little bit of concern as to whether that we're going to have the cushion if things can get even worse in our market in terms of, of revenue not coming through from the property tax rolls or things like that and whether we'll have the flexibility to build a deal with that very well.
Kathy?
Well, I, I, of course I see the world through warped glasses. I see the opposite from you. How unusual. They did make, as Gail pointed out, they did make the cuts from what they were told they were going to have basically for 2012. And it's their call on their operations and they're trying not to cut services to the point of hurting something, but to keep us going. And that's a totally different responsibility from what we all have said in the past that we also want them to do and we said we wanted to do, which is planned for the future. Well, you know what? Some of the stuff we've had to do in the last two years in particular had to be done because when it pushed came to shove in the preceding, I'll go way out there, 15 years sitting out there on that, those chairs, I can tell you, that when push came to shove, they always gave in and said, "Nah, nah, 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 nah," and we'll spend it on operations. We have asked people not to do that and they're, they're actually shrinking their operations budget as best they can to maintain services. And I don't see this as a swap at all. It's, we said this is what we needed to do, so we need to change our message if we're going to come back and stab them in the eyeball for doing it.
I would counter a little bit and depending upon what it is that you think we told them to do.
We, we react about the community center ad nauseam and about how it wasn't covered.
Yes, yep. And so I'm, I'm all into, I'm all into paying for the community center because we said we needed to.
I'm saying that we-
But we now have a city where we are doing our best to make up for-
Never mind.
-people not paying for their depreciation of our buildings as we went forward. And so we're trying to make up for that and then, you know, I guess we could kind of see it coming, but all of a sudden every, everybody needs a whole bunch of money to build new buildings. And we need to keep building our roads because we have our commitments to the environment and so we just cannot do all these things at the same time. And, and so, so the chief certainly has kept us aware, the police chief, that they have needs. He's kept us aware. But, but now we're transferring it into actual projects. The fire department, you know, I think that they did a great job of putting together their group to study and figure out a different way of operating and then we as a council said, "Okay," if, you know, because it's not like we had any choice, but it comes with new buildings. And, and so, you know, we're being asked in the worst recession in our lifetimes to do more work than any council has done here probably in our lifetimes. And so it seems to me that we have to focus a little sharper and, and say, you know, we can't do it all at once. And so I definitely, absolutely want to be a council member that when we say, "Yep, let's do this, we got to fix the community center," that then I pay for that in, in the, in the levy. But there are the items in the levy that, you know, we've talked about, but we're not yet committed to. And those things we have to look at and say, you know, yes, we know we need to do it, but can we do it all at one time? And so, and, and quite frankly, unless we get the taxpayers in a referendum to say, "We're willing to foot the bill," I'm just not going to wander into taking out a loan for eight or nine million dollars to rebuild the police department. And to some degree, the, the same for the fire departments. You know, we just can't spend it all at one time because, you know, if we did our 5%, which we, you know, we could easily do 8%, 9%.
No.
And we easily could because there is that much need in the city.
But there is nothing-
And then it's going to be multiplied by the market value, whom said credit shift. And, and so we'll just blow people out of the water. And so I'll stop now.
Yeah, I'd finish, but it's not working.
All right. If we can get back to the PowerPoint, we were at the, I think we'd moved on to somewhere in here. There we go. We talked about park equipment replacement. We also talked about levy for capital items just simply because we depleted the fund. We had a balance in the fund as, as now needs additional cash just to do some of those local replacements and operating in, in two years. So moving on through this area, the levy proposes for a fire truck replacement. We haven't funded this for a number of years. We do have a fund balance of $426,000 and that's for a purchase in 2013. By doing $100,000 a year would have an allocation and available for a purchase in 2016. This gets back to the issue that we just talked about, the 150,000. This is a new item we added in, just for your consideration as part of these discussions. This additional $50,000 that we added in at this point in time would be combined with that 150,000 from the police department expansion. So we would then have the $200,000 as beginning of a down payment should you choose to do capital improvements for the police department. Again, we're assuming you'd need it in possibly 2013, but we would add the funds into the CIP fund for setting aside should you choose to do that. So again, setting money aside, not designated for expenses.
Sorry, I pushed the wrong button. I pushed my light again instead of my, is it getting late?
Yes.
Fire truck replacement levy, we're going from having had it at, at zero and I recall it was, in some years it was 50,000 in the past, wasn't it?
Yes.
I'm wondering, from the standpoint of, of equipment surviving, if, if we put out the next truck replacement another year and levied it at, at something like 75,000, is that something that is, is viable or from staff's standpoint of simply a terrible, bad idea? And I guess my, my overall direction is that I'm, I'm interested in, in seeing, seeing about 1% perhaps come out of this in one place and another. And, and this is an area where I could see a little bit perhaps being shaved off without too much immediate effect, given how much we're putting into other capital areas.
Mayor and counsel, we've talked about that with the chief and certainly some of the things are there. We need to inventory our equipment, understand what's there. We certainly have that balance. I mean, we have 426,000. I mean, we need to, to do that. The one good thing about the fire truck replacement fund is over the years, we've done a lot of borrowing for major equipment purchases. In this case, we have a fund where we don't spend money until we have enough money in the fund. And so we do have enough money to get through 2013, 2014 and 2015. And if we don't have enough money, well, it'd be nice to start putting something in it. And so I understand your approach and-